All right, good evening. I'd like to call and order the October 8, 2015 meeting, City Valiant and Planning Commission, and ask everyone to silence electronic devices, laptops, cell phones, anything you've got that makes a noise, please turn it off for us. Heather, would you please call the roll?
I'm Grunstad.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Ali Taishi.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien and Phyllis McKee have been excused.
Okay, so there's four of us here tonight. We have a set of minutes from August 20th that we postponed at our last meeting, and they're back for approval, and we've resolved any concerns regarding those, so I think we're going to have a vote on approval of those minutes. And we can just do that by consensus, everyone in favor of approving the minutes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move those minutes forward. Before we start our work session, we're going to have a public comment period. This is a time for anyone to speak about anything other than the topic of our meeting tonight, which is the conference plan update. We've only got two people in the audience, so give either of you the opportunity to speak about another topic if you'd like, take a few minutes, let us know your thoughts.
Hi, this is Linda Twitchell with the Building Industry Association. Clayton Petrie made this announcement at a county planning commission meeting a week ago, so I'd like to repeat here for those who follow these or might be watching on TV regarding Perry Eskridge, who is my equivalent with the Realtors, the local Realtors. Perry was diagnosed with leukemia in mid-July. He's been down at Fred Hutch in Seattle much of the time since. A couple weeks ago, in addition to this, he had a heart attack. So if you are interested in following how Perry's doing, you can go on the Realtors' webpage, and there's a picture of him and his wife. You can click on it and get involved in a blog where they're posting day-to-day how things are going. Right now, the leukemia, good news is it's in remission. They have a certain period of time to try and keep it in remission before they try and get him a bone marrow transplant. Meanwhile, he has a fungal infection in his lung, and they're still trying to get rid of clots from the heart attack. So they're asking for prayers and other, you know, support if anyone tends to be inclined that direction. That's how you can check on him, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you for letting us know. Seeing no one else who wants to speak, we'll close the public comment period and move right into our work session. And the topic tonight are the final two, I guess, topic areas for our conference of plan update discussion, sustainability and innovation, and I think we'll let Lisa tell us all about those two topics. We will have an opportunity for public comment at the end if anyone does want to speak. Thanks, Lisa.
Sure. Lisa Poole, Senior Planner with the Planning and Community Development Department. As you stated, tonight we'll be covering the last two of our five focus areas, sustainability and innovation. And first off, we'll start with sustainability. And we'll just cover a little bit of background, the existing goals and policies and recommendations. So sustainability in its broader sense is looking at this, our society, our environment, and our economic development in concert with each other, and this would be for current generations and for future generations. So we're looking at all three of these elements. And the city's legacies and strategic commitments are essentially the city's sustainability elements. These were adopted in 2009 by city council, and they cover a broad range of topics like clean, safe drinking water, a healthy environment, economy, sense of place, safe and prepared community, mobility and connectivity options, quality of life, and quality city services, and equity and social justice. The city's performance measures monitor the legacies over a period of time, and this is just a screenshot of the equity and social justice performance measures, and we have all of these located on our websites. Really interesting to see how these things track over time. So some local examples related to each of these three areas. As stated in the packet, we're doing a lot with the environment right now. We've got some daylighting projects, the Patton Creek Daylighting, the Squawlicum Creek Reroute. Of course, our critical areas ordinance update with equity. We've got our affordable housing programs, rental registration program that was recently enacted. And then in regards to economy, of course, our urban village plans and all of the incentive packages that we're bringing forward for citywide economic development as well as targeted for the urban villages. And these are just some examples. Of course, we're doing a lot more in each of these. Regarding existing goals and policies, we do have specific chapters for the environment and for economic development. We don't have a specific chapter for equity and social justice, however, that concept is woven throughout the plan in several chapters, and I think it's specifically strong in regards to transportation and housing and parks. And in those areas where it's not as strong, we have some recommendations for that. So this is just an example, some examples of our recommendations. It's not the full list, those are in the packet, but we are recommending that the legacies and strategic commitments be incorporated into the plan because those were adopted since the last plan. We also want to continue coordinating transportation and land use planning in our transit corridors that link the urban villages. We also want to encourage the use of sustainability rating systems and best practices such as LEED, Built Green, green roads, and eco-districts. We also want to emphasize the need for resiliency and adaptation to external events such as climate change and natural hazards like earthquakes and floods, and we want to reference the Wacom County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan in doing so. And lastly, we want to support the development of an urban forest management plan. And you'll see that some of these recommendations are included for some of the other focus areas because there's obviously a lot of overlap. We could have listed out all of the health recommendations under sustainability and vice versa, but I just wanted to pull out a few as examples, and if you have any questions specific to this one, we're happy to answer.
Do we want to talk about this before we move on to the next one and do it that way?
Could I interrupt for a second? Tom, could you move the flag?
Oh.
Behind you.
Oh, I got it.
Someone put in front of the screen. Or Ali, thank you. I don't know how that got over there, but... Perfect, thank you.
Are there any questions from the planning commission right now on this? Sounds like maybe we talk about this and then the innovation, or do you feel like they're kind of intermixed enough?
So, I have one question.
Sure.
How do we incorporate the legacies and strategic commitments? Do we just take that page and copy and paste it into the plan? Or, you know? We could do that, or we could just refer to them, which might be a better way because if they change over time, then we don't have a set of outdated things in our plan. So we probably just refer to them.
I had a question about the structure of this. You had kind of highlighted in gray in the staff report the recommendations, like the one Tom just referred to. Are those bullet points, like policy, like draft policy language you want to add, or are they just ideas that we think we need to pursue? I was a little confused as to if these were actual, you know, recommendations for language like you might bring back to us at the next meeting or something?
No, sorry for the confusion. The additional language under each recommendation is just providing a little context.
Yeah, but the recommendation itself, is that...
No, that's not the exact language.
Okay.
That would be included.
Okay.
So another way to integrate the legacies, an example would be the economic development chapter that was adopted a few years ago. There was an appendix, I believe, that talked about how that chapter related to the legacies and helped implement the legacies, so we could do that with each element. Might be a good way to do it, too.
Can you explain a little bit more about the performance measures in terms of how that's set up? Is that like an annual survey that's conducted, or how that information is kind of integrated into how the city implements this plan?
It is, it is an annual measurement tool that we use, and we track, there are literally dozens of these performance measures that we track. We try and do it annually, although some of the data's not always available annually. But you can see from the examples that we've given you, the last year was from 2014. Looks like the data came from '14, so it is something we try and do annually, yes.
And then who looks at it and says, "Okay, this is good, this is bad," kind of?
The council reviews it every year.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's always available on our website for anyone to review, but yeah, we, well, the council gets a report every year on how we're doing on these various measurements.
Anybody else right now? No, okay. I think for now we're okay. Yeah, comments, let's, should we, do you want to hold until, I think, in reading the staff report, I felt like there was a lot of consistency between these two topics, so I don't mind waiting until we kind of discuss, yeah, discussion. Why don't you talk about innovation, and then we'll have a broader discussion?
Pull that one up. So innovation, that was another focus area that the planning commission brought up as a topic for the comp plan. And again, I'll just cover the background briefly, existing goals and policies, and our recommendations. So this is an area where the Washington State Growth Management Act requires innovative land use management techniques, and these include density bonuses, cluster housing, planned unit developments, and transfer development rights. And these are just examples that GMA cites for innovative techniques and land use. Oops, I apologize. So this is a list of some of the local land use techniques that we think are innovative, our mixed-use urban villages, the infill housing toolkit, cluster subdivisions, density bonuses, and purchase of development rights. We have done a lot locally regarding transportation and innovative transportation planning. We have a strong multimodal transportation planning program that covers pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. We conduct an annual transportation report on annual mobility. We have a transportation impact fee reduction that Chris Como tells me has saved developers over $400,000 as of October 1st of this year. So this provides an economic development incentive for the type of mixed-use development that we talk about in our comp plan. We also have a multimodal transportation concurrency program, and all of these are very innovative for the state as well as the country. Some other local examples and other topic areas, as far as economic development, we have public-private partnerships for redevelopment projects and other types of projects like place-making downtown. Our restoration projects that I cited earlier, green infrastructure. Right now, we have a program for downtown improvement gardens, which are rain gardens. It's a low-impact development technique. We've passed three greenways levies for parks and trails, and then several innovations in our building and development codes, such as the, our solar panel program, which helps developers and homeowners save money on solar panels. The existing goals and policies related to innovation are sort of focused in on these areas, housing, parks, transportation, land use, and economic development. So we do have a lot of goals and policies already focused in this area, as you'll notice in the packet. I won't go through all of those right now. The recommendations to strengthen innovation would be to address housing needs, to respond to changing demographics, support multi-generational communities, support healthy food and community gardens, recognizing the impact of transportation costs on housing affordability, and then again focusing on the transit corridors that link our urban villages. So you will see some redundancy again, as I stated, with the sustainability recommendations. And once again, this isn't a full list, but the full list is in the packet. So I'll have a seat, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the planning commission members about that innovation presentation?
Well, I understand, you know, this is planning stuff, but is there any place in the city that somebody is maybe considering fiber optic network throughout the city and we can get rid of Comcast? I shouldn't say things like that, but it seems to me that there are a couple of cities in the United States that have a pretty widespread fiber optic network, and they seem to be attracting a lot of the quote, "high-tech, high-paying" jobs. And if we really are looking for stuff like that, shouldn't we be at least thinking about what our infrastructure could do to support that or the high living, or the living wage jobs, you know, the manufacturing jobs? And I'm just asking a question, is there anybody in city government thinking about this kind of thing?
We'll have to look into that. I'm sure that there is, but we'll come back to you with more information on that.
I have a, I have a question about, I brought up transfer development rights last meeting. It's something I wouldn't mind hearing about, and I noticed one of the recommendations talked about including strategies to increase future share of urban growth relative to growth used to rural areas, which is important, you know, making sure that we're accommodating the appropriate amount of growth in the county. That's a big discussion we had, you know, a couple months ago. And it says including the transfer development rights, and I'm just curious where the city's going with this because we've talked a bit up here about having performance measures and metrics to kind of judge what's working and what isn't, and this happens to be one thing where we kind of have some data suggesting, I think it's even in the staff report, that these programs haven't been used at all. And like for me, being innovative is not doing something over and over again that doesn't work, it's thinking about ways to change programs to make them effective or accomplish these goals. Is there, are we gonna, there's a lot in this comp plan about TDRs, and I just don't see them doing anything. Are we considering, are you guys considering coming back to us with some changes to that part of the plan?
We are actively working with the county on the TDR program. Theirs doesn't work particularly well either.
No.
And so we know that that is an implementation measure that needs some work. What we want to do now is make sure that we've got the goal and policy base in place in the plan to direct that work, but that's an implementation issue for us.
Has there been any discussion about just scrapping that policy entirely as a method to implement the plan?
I'm not sure we're ready to give up on the idea of TDRs. We could have a whole night's discussion on TDRs.
Sure.
And probably will at some point, I hope, in the near future, but for tonight, we're looking at the goals and policies.
Yeah.
So are we set with, do we want to continue the direction to work on that program with the county? And what do we need to do to make it work? And that's a whole separate topic.
Jeff?
So along a similar vein, in a way, the bullet point that deals with sustainability, considering expanded incentive programs to include workforce housing, for example. We had talked about in the housing section, some of those issues, you know, identifying what the barriers are that are driving up costs, and whether incentives are appropriate, or whether, whether removing existing programs that increase costs, or, you know, trying to crack the nut to get more workforce housing. So I'm curious about what the overlap between the housing chapter and the sustainability chapter is, because it seems like an odd duck that's in the sustainability chapter, and I'm just wondering when you go and you straighten all these things out and figure out which chapters they're in, does this just wash out and go into the housing chapter? Or are you intending on trying to draw things from other chapters that might have a sustainability implication and just cross-reference it or have its own recommendation? How does that actually work?
Well, I, so all of these focus areas overlap with each other, as I stated, and this one is actually from the housing.
Mm-hmm.
Set of recommendations, and it's applicable to sustainability because of the equity and social justice component.
So...
That's why I pulled it into this. I think it will probably be referenced in a couple of different chapters, probably the housing chapter and the land use chapter.
Okay, I'm trying to envision how this all gets pulled together into a plan that's tight, and so I guess...
So am I.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I was curious about that because I didn't think, you know, when we talk about incentive programs versus other options, I didn't, we hadn't really had that discussion in any great depth, and so I was kind of, this wording seemed fairly direct, so I was just curious about how it all ties together, but...
I think the point is to start getting the discussion going about workforce housing. Our current plan really doesn't talk a whole lot about it.
Right.
So however that ends up looking in the actual plan, it probably won't say that exact.
Okay. Well, I appreciate having the topic in here, wherever it ends up.
Kind of piggybacking, just generally, I think one of the hard parts for us over the past three work sessions has been kind of conceptualizing the big picture of what we're doing here, and looking at the changes that might actually hap, like the physical changes to the code, comp plan, that might actually happen, because we talk about ideas mostly. And so I just want to clarify that at some, I think I asked this before, and I just want to make sure, at some point, we're actually going to look at a change document, kind of, and be able to really have a more concrete picture of how these ideas, or like the idea that Jeff is referring to, is actually being incorporated in the actual text of what we're changing?
Yeah, we're still sort of pondering the format of how to work you through the document, but you will see, when the individual chapters come forward, you will see, we will identify for you, for example, in the goals and policies, which ones are carryovers from the existing plan and which ones are new. So it'll be, it'll be easy for you to see what's being carried over versus what's new. And I don't know about, as we get further and further into this, I don't know about a red line version, that might be too messy.
Fair.
But we will identify for you what's existing and what's new, so that you'll be able to perhaps focus on the new stuff, and we can spend more time talking about that.
I have...
Our intent is to make it a relatively tidy document.
Yeah. I have one other, unless Steve, you had something?
I just, it's, it's kind of difficult for me to, to look at all this and say vanilla is good and something else is bad. That's, that's what I see here, and it's so difficult just to pick out, because we're not talking specifics, really, we're just talking generalities and goals. So just wondering why I'm so quiet, it's just, it's difficult to look at these sections and make constructive comments.
Yeah, and we understand that, and we knew this was a new way to sort of work our way through the, through the plan and focus on the issues that you really wanted to focus on, and this is high-level stuff. And it will be, it will get easier, Steve, as you see the various chapters to work your way through and see what's new and what's being carried over, and you'll be able to provide more, perhaps more specific feedback at that point.
I think it is, I feel the same way. It's tough, and it's tough to pin down. It's not like looking at a code, like we're going to look at subdivision ordinance or something that's concrete. I didn't, I wasn't able to attend the housing work session, but the last work session on health, and then these two, it did give me, you know, looking back at the conference plan, it did give me a sense that we do have a good framework and policy. The plan's big, and there's, not everything's right, but I just felt like generally, there's a lot of what we want, and part of it is measurement, measuring that, and how to measure that, and implementation, and making sure we're keeping track of what's working. If, I mean, I'd like to see, and maybe it's in there already, and you can just show us, but I'd like to see us make sure that we're maybe thinking about language that is more clear about our intent to track performance and look at implementation and whether or not they're succeeding, and make it clear in the plan that we need to be kind of checking on this as we go, because it only happens every eight years, and we're basically saying with this plan that it's, hey, it's pretty good, it's not that old, we don't need to change that much, but we haven't really had a chance to look at how it's been working with any data. I had one last comment specific to innovation. There was something. I have a little bit of, I brought this up at the last meeting, too, which is regarding parks and how we address parks, and I, I don't feel like we're being very innovative in terms of looking at how we're planning for our parks moving forward. We do have a habitat plan that we're working on, which that, I think that's innovative, and it's going to help us on that side of things, but in terms of health and active use of parks and how, like level of service, again, I know we're not going to talk about the details of level of service, but it seems like maybe we need a policy regarding monitoring the effectiveness of our, our parks plan for accomplishing our goals, because I brought it up, it's a sticking point for me, I brought it up at the last meeting. You know, our current metrics, to me, don't seem to be working, no one seems to want to talk about it. Parks kind of punted it when we had the last open space, I mean, Parks Plan discussion a few years ago, and I would hate to see us slide through this comp plan update and not have some discussion, substantive discussion about whether or not we're going in the right direction, and if there's more innovative things we could do to get, to get the services that we want to our community and not end up spending tons and tons of money, which is kind of what we're doing now, so...
What kind of services are we lacking?
Well, I mean, we don't lack services, but we have really high impact fees for parks, they're our highest impact fee. We talk about being innovative by providing transportation impact fee reductions in urban villages and things like that, but we don't ever see anything come forward from parks about how to be innovative about providing park services in like urban areas in a different way. It's all about land acquisition, the whole entire level of service, and my understanding is based on how many acres of land we acquire per thousand people, and I just think that's an antiquated way to look at it. We're trying to be more urban.
Doesn't everybody have polo ponies?
I don't know, I just feel like we're trying to be more urban, and, and we should maybe think about, is it more important to have proximity to parks? Like they presented last, you know, one of the things about health last week was, or last meeting, was talking about how close we can be to parks, or, you know, is it better to have a small park with a bunch of amenities in it versus a ton of land that we can't afford to maintain? What does that mean over the next 20 years? That's what I'm talking about, and I thought the comp plan update was the time to talk about that, but I'm not sure if it is. Jeff?
I seem to recall talking about that a bit at some point in the past five years, and I think one of the things that came up was, you know, are people looking for ball fields, or are they looking for more trails and, and, you know, whatever? And I don't think there was a good answer at the time, you know, and it was almost like we need more ball fields on the north end, and we already have lots of parks in the south, and it kind of ended up in an odd discussion, but the one thing that makes sense to me is we talk about emphasizing or retrying or reemphas, yeah, reemphasizing urban villages and trying to get those kick-started as more a pocket park, so that you're not having to deal with these large destination parks, and you can actually incorporate that into urban planning. And I, we never had that conversation specifically, so maybe that's a good thing that we can fold into the discussion.
I think that's a really good example of, you know, is that a more sustainable idea, having a park that you can wa, a very small park that everybody could walk to, and I'm not saying ball fields are better than trails or anything like that, I think that we just don't, right now, it seems very rigid, and we don't have, I'd like to see more flexibility built into how we look at these issues, so that the Parks Department can react if a part of town needs a ball field and another part of town needs a trail, and we're not just kind of accumulating land without thinking about it. And maybe I'm misrepresenting how things are happening, it's just a perception, and I think it's a perception amongst, not just me, other people in the community have the same perception, so maybe it's an educational thing. Yeah. I'll get off my soapbox on that.
Well, I think we've just gone through a period economically where it was better to try to acquire property because the properties were available and they were the right price. There is nobody here that would admit that our, our maintenance and development for those parks is not where it should be, and it's my... those parks is not where it should be, and it's my understanding that the next Greenways levy wants to focus on development and maintenance of the properties that they were able to acquire over the last couple of years. I, I, I don't fault them for that line of thinking, I think it's very positive, and I think all this will happen in time, but I'm very pleased we were, the Greenways and, and through the Parks Department and James King's leadership, we were able to acquire some great properties, and the development of those properties goes through a cycle of planting shirets, what do you want on it? Do you want frisbee? Do you want golf? Do you want horseshoes? And we go through these phases for these parks, and a lot of them haven't hit that phase yet, but it's coming, and I, I'm just glad that we were able to take advantage of some economic situations where we were able to grab land when we could grab it, and, uh, brought up Mr. Kang, I, I'm certainly sorry to see him leaving our community, I, I think he's made a, an outstanding contribution to the city of Bellingham, and I, I would like to acknowledge him for that.
That's a good point about, uh, the economic element of it, and again, by no means suggesting we shouldn't acquire parks where we need them, more just looking at our, how we're determining our level of service and what, you know, where we're, I guess, how we're, what we're acquiring the funds for, and maybe that's being addressed through Greenways. Anyway. Anything else? I think of all the topics, we, we probably, I don't know, feel like this is, it's a ve- they're like esoteric issues and, or ideas, and we have a lot in our plan already about it, so I think, I, at least for me, and I'm, I'm getting the feeling from everybody else kind of, there's just not a lot of questions to ask that are specific to these two topics.
Oh, you've provided great feedback so far, and, and it's good to hear that, for the most part, you know, our existing plan covers these things fairly well, and let's focus on the areas where it doesn't, and, uh, anyway, you know, what you've given us is great, um, you might want to ask if anybody wants to speak at this point.
Yeah, we're going to provide an opportunity for comment.
Good.
I just want to make sure there's no other questions. All right, well, with that, let's, uh, give the public an opportunity to comment, we'll take some testimony, um, come on up, give us your thoughts, state your name, address for the record.
I'm back, Linda Twitchell, Building Industry Association. I, I would like to address a couple of very basic questions. Uh, when we talk about sustainability in particular rega- regarding housing, which is my area, um, we have two things that keep coming up, one, for instance, when you look at these plans to address the issue of housing that is affordable, not subsidized housing, but housing that is affordable being a problem, and we are now drawing in the workforce housing in addition to low income, um, we're not really, you guys have, have done a good job of trying to address the city council, in, in my personal opinion, has not, but the issue of the basic problems underlying the fact that we have a tight market and prices are rising. I was at a Realtors' meeting this week where they noted that in the last week in Bellingham, a city of, what, eighty-four thousand people now, last week, we had nine, count them, nine homes available under the cost of $250,000, and that's it. Land supply is a biggie, you've heard me talk about this before, I think you guys tried to address it, I would hope somewhere we would try and pass a statement on to city council that it would be good to look at underlying causes, because sustainability, to me, is not just social equity per se, but is a matter of, we don't want to get a community where we're gentrified and the people who work here can't afford to live here anymore, which is, I, I'm personally concerned, we're kind of heading that direction. Uh, land availability is, is a big one in terms of supply and demand and the cost of housing, so when we suggest, and our, our bullet points all address subsidized housing, you have to do some of that, for sure, I mean, you can't ignore people who have housing problems, but if we're now looking at not only low income but workforce housing as being a problem, we can't just address subsidized housing, we've got to go beyond that if we're going to actually come up with a, with a creative means of trying to deal with the problem. Okay, the other thing along this line that keeps striking me is we're talking about TDRs, Transfer Development Rights, and when we were talking about possibly extending the UGA, there was a discussion of attaching a requirement for those that we were being told was required by the county, if you go look at the county issue, they were suggesting that there should be inter-local agreements with the cities, I believe, to help deal with this, but the program the county was pushing, according to Mark Pisonius, hasn't even been begun yet, when I talked to him a couple of weeks ago, he was saying, no, we, we've got nowhere with that, so it's not as if there's a program to tie into. But the basic issue on that is if you are requiring transfer development rights, you require a developer, if he wants greater density, for instance, to go out and buy development rights from, let's say, the Lake Wackham watershed. We're running into a slight contradiction here, the GMA and the comp plan suggests we want higher densities, and how can we do that? How we get, can we get more people to live in the city of Bellingham rather than spreading outward? But we are charging developers for using higher densities. Okay, which do we want? Do we want higher densities, or do we want to suggest that higher densities are a gift to someone and therefore they owe us? There's a, there's a contradiction here in the basing underlying assumption, so this is the kind of conversation I'm hoping somebody in the comp plan work will address, that the, the contradictions here on that.
About thirty seconds, Linda.
The one other thing I would mention is that when we talk about transportation costs and the, the cost of housing, I think what we're really looking at is, it's great to have better transportation in the city, but when you're looking at the actual costs in the community, we're looking at low-income people who are living in Maple Falls because they can't afford housing in Bellingham, and they're driving all the way in and out every day, so that's what I'm seeing from our direction, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? April?
I'm April Barker, Birchwood Neighborhood, um, I really appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this and taking the time to look over it, the, the one thing I'm still trying to get through the comprehensive plan and really understand the process, but what I don't see, I see about, uh, building new and, um, how we're going to do, we're, and we're already showing that we're doing some pretty phenomenal things even in the Birchwood Neighborhood, but when we are setting our, our whole society up for success, we know that there's areas where we, we really didn't plan for that, we planned for infill, but we weren't looking at how do you make this community a successful community and have every person having the opportunity, and so just in our comprehensive plan, is there a way we can put something about looking, looking at our past infill and, and how we're committed to bringing that, not only up to a standard, but also setting that community up for success as we continue to, um, build and grow? So I'm not quite sure how you would do that, but I think it's just making a commitment to some of our, our past, and I don't want to call them mistakes, it's just how we planned in the past, and we've learned a lot from that, and then how would we just keep that somewhere so we're, we're always trying to go back and, and maybe right some wrongs with our infill and other things, so, thank you.
Thank you, April.
April, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
How, how do you define community success?
You know, it's interesting, because we talk about parks, and, um, just because you put a park close to a high-density infill doesn't necessarily mean that that park's going to get utilized, um, so I think when I'm thinking about setting, setting communities up for sex, success, setting people up for success, it's, um, you know, are we doing true mixed densities, social-economic diversity, or, or, or are we pushing social-economic classes by, you know, separating by roads or blocks? Um, so, you know, how, how do you do that whenever, we've already set up a density that, um, for whatever reason, I don't know politically correctness on how to, how to state, but like, we have it in the Birchwood Neighborhood, and we're really trying to work with, um, when, when development was brought in, it was really separated from the rest of the neighborhood, I mean, it's just clear as day, and we need to correct that over time, so that, so that we are all mixing and working together, and, and it, 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 so I guess setting up for success is so many different things, and I could write some stuff down if that would be more helpful, but access to schools, um, you know, like, we have our Cordada Elementary that's really far out, uh, just that feeling of developing community, meeting neighbors, going to green spaces that are safe, uh, having access to local food, but also in, in, I'm, I'm thinking more of corridors, say, along West Maplewood, how over time are we going to really try to kind of correct that and make that a successful? Not everybody's going to succeed, but if we, as a community, have given those building blocks of success, then I, I think that we're, we're way better off socially in the long run, um, with our investments, so I just, I don't, I don't have a better answer for that, but that's a good question, and I'll try to sit down and write something up.
Thank you, April. I think that's a good comment, I think that's what we're kind of talking about when we talk about measuring this as we go and making sure that we're looking at what's worked and what hasn't worked, and trying to be flexible to address those things, so... Okay, any other comments? All right, with that, we'll close the public testimony portion of the meeting. Is there any other kind of discussion on this topic from anybody? Okay, well, I think that might wrap it up, I'd just like to maybe ask, before we move on, um, from the topic, can, can you kind of give us an idea what you see as the next steps in this for us in terms of the comp plan, now that we've gone through three work sessions on the, on the five, um, items that we chose to discuss?
Sure, yeah, so that's, you're right, that's the last of the major topics that we wanted to spend some time talking to you about, and now we are diligently working on updating the chapters, writing the new chapters, um, and we're going to bring those back to you, um, either in December or January, so we'll start having meetings on the chapters very soon, um, your, your fall calendar is, is, got some space in, in December, but we're going to be pretty busy for, for the next couple of meetings, so, um, that's what we're doing, we're working on taking the input that we've gotten from these work sessions and writing new chapters for you to look at.
So maybe you'll bring us, like, if they're smaller, a couple from a meeting, or if it's a really big chapter, we'll do a meeting on it, or?
Yeah, if it's a, you know, land use chapter, we'll want to do a meeting on that, um, but some of the other ones, we might be able to combine, um, we need to get you through this quickly, and we will try and do that by identifying for you, again, what's existing and what's, what's new, and, and you can help us figure out if there are still gaps in, in what we've had, what we have, and, and, uh, we'll work through those.
So are we going to work through it numerically, chapter one, and then chapter two, and then chapter three?
You know, I think it makes sense to start with land use, um, since that drives really a lot of the, what happens in the other chapters, um, land use and transportation and housing are probably the three big ones. I think it makes sense to start with those.
Okay. So with that, we'll end the work session, and, uh, we do have some new business on our schedule, which is a Shoreline Committee report from Steve Crooks, who's the Chair of the Shoreline Committee, Steve, you want to take us away?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, tonight, the Shoreline Subcommittee for this, uh, Commission met and reviewed the proposal for compliance with the applicable goals, objectives, and policies and regulations in the Shoreline Master Program regarding development of a new car dealership on Iowa Street, Dewey Griffin Subaru. Direct impacts to the 100-foot buffer are not proposed in the addition to the new stormwater outfalls from the stormwater treatment wetland facility to Wadcombe Creek. At the conclusion of the presentation, the Subcommittee voted to transmit a recommendation to the Planning and Community Development Director for consideration to approve. End of report.
Thank you. So that's it, unless, Greg, you've got older new business?
I've got a couple of things for you.
Okay.
Uh, first off, I wanted to remind you that we have a work, or a public hearing next week.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little bit unique, um, we're processing a request from the Bellingham School District to amend our current comp plan to adopt a new capital facilities plan for the district. Their current plan is part of our comp plan, they do a six-year plan, we adopt it as part of our comp plan, so that we make sure that we're all working together on this stuff, and that makes them eligible to collect impact fees, they have to be, their plan has to be adopted as a, as a component of our plan, and that ma- that keeps them eligible for impact fees. As you know, uh, we've already done our round of amendments to our comp plan for this year, uh, so we went to council and said, look, we've got this situation with the school district, their plan, their current plan is going to expire at the end of the year, and if that happens, then they're no longer eligible to collect impact fees, so council said, yes, this is important enough, we're going to go ahead and, and process another amendment to our comp plan this year and see, and we'll take it through the process. So the first step is with you all, uh, the district will be here to present their new six-year plan, you'll get to talk about, um, what's in that plan and ask them questions, and then pass along a recommendation to council, and the council will hold a public hearing, and hopefully by the end of the year, um, we'll have a decision about whether or not to adopt their plan into, into ours, so that come January one, they're still eligible to collect impact fees. If we, if we, if we don't do that, then there's going to be some time period next year when they're not going to be eligible to collect impact fees, and we, we want to make sure that we at least process their request and give them a chance to present their plan for, to us and to you. Questions? I'll explain this all again next week, I just wanted to give you kind of a preview.
Similar to the, what we did with the Parks Plan, when, when we needed to update it to, to maintain grant funding.
It's, it's, it's very similar, yeah, they're on a six-year cycle with their plan, it doesn't match up necessarily with what we're doing, so, um, we're going to help them out.
But if, if the city doesn't help them out, there's going to be a land rush of developers trying to get their permits with no, uh, school impact fees on them?
Anything's possible, Tom, anything's possible. Second thing, I've gotten a request from, um, Jeff Kochman, who is Talbot Company, Barclay Village, he's extended an offer to the Commission to come out and meet with them, and he wants to show you or talk about their plans for the village for the future. I told Jeff that I would pass along that offer to you, um, this is a legislative format, so there's nothing inappropriate about you going to talk to Jeff about what's going on in Barclay Village, uh, you, we just can't have four of you meet with him at once, we can't have a meeting with a quorum, um, we would need to notice that and everything, so it's totally up to you if you want to do that, um, you know, I would just encourage you to do it individually or two at a time if you want to. Jeff's just extending an offer to, to, uh, talk about their plans for Barclay Village, and so I wanted to pass that on to you, and I'll pass it on to the folks that aren't here, it's totally up to you if you want to do it or not. Okay?
Thank you. Questions on that?
Um, I don't know exactly what's in mind, but one thing that, that, um, I would think is if they have a fairly well-developed idea of what their urban village should look like and what their development pattern should be, and how that might vary from some of the discussions on their other urban villages, and you think there is value in that, I would think that it might be interesting to actually do that in the full public process in front of all the commissioners, um, we can get educated on what another, uh, because I don't think we have another situation where there's one party that, that actually controls an entire urban village that has an ability to come up with a vision, come up with a plan, implement the plan, so I think it'd be fascinating to find out, but I'm not really comfortable going and meeting with them myself, I don't know what that would accomplish.
It's, it's, like I said, it's a legislative process, so there's nothing inappropriate about it, it's whether you're comfortable doing it or not, and we have encouraged Jeff to participate in this process and bring as much of the information and much of their experience with Barclay Village and their plans for the future as possible, and do it here in meetings when we're all here, but I just wanted to extend that, that invitation that he's made.
Would it be possible to coordinate through our staff as to, yes, I am interested in doing it, and maybe giving a couple different dates that would be available?
If any of you are interested, let us know, and we'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
Or you can, yeah, just let us know, it should go through us.
Jeff, it's a good point, because I think even Tara, when she was in, mentioned something about how Berkeley had, was unique and had, already kind of was operating partway there and had implemented some, some of these urban village ideas on their own, and so... and had implemented some, some of these urban village ideas on their own. And so they're kind of unique in that they're the only single entity. Is it inappropriate to offer someone like that the opportunity to present information to us for more than three or four minutes? Because I think, you know, sometimes you see these people come in and we get written information and you read it. And you can take what you can from a written information. But then when they come to the podium, you get kind of a different feel. But three or four minutes isn't that much. And I don't want to do anything that would be unfair to all the speakers. But because they're kind of bigger than all the speakers in a sense, they have more, maybe you need more time to explain what's going on.
Well, I'll let them answer that specifically. But I would point out that we had one other similar, slightly similar process here with Ralph Black in King Mountain.
I wasn't involved in that.
Well, I was just pointing out that that was actually a matter on the table.
Similar, yeah.
But that was a case where there was a discussion about urban village, about phasing, about the role in city, uh, directing the phasing. And it all came to tears. But, um, if we have a session where there is actually a presentation, invite Ralph Black to come to and.
Similar opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's very interesting because it's, you know, urban villages haven't taken off to the extent that people thought they would. And, um, you know, you have mixed land ownership in most of them. And it's fairly complicated. And I think it's a useful discussion to hear what parties that actually are in a position to do something about it, think about it, and have experienced and see what their ideas are.
That's, that's probably a better idea than you guys going out there to meet with Jeff is we'll just invite him in, tell him he can have 15 minutes and talk to you about their experiences in Barclay Village and the plans that they have for the future. Um, and we do that all together here. It's probably a better idea.
Yeah, if, if he, maybe if he would, on our behalf, see if he's interested in that.
I would do that.
Um, I, great. It'd be interesting. Okay, great. Well, thank you. Um, I think that's it.
Do you all know about Cerise? That she has resigned from the.
There was no formal notice.
Okay. She's resigned from the commission officially, immediately. She's not here, obviously. Uh, and so we are, uh, coordinating with the mayor's office to find a new, a new victim.
Open enrollment?
Sure. Anybody that lives in the city.
Anybody who's interested.
Anybody that lives in the city, you want to be on the, the Bellingham Planning Commission, go on the city's website. There's a form you fill out. Um, and we'll take a look at it with the mayor's office. Commissioners or mayor, commissioners or mayor appointments.
Thanks for mentioning that at the meeting. Okay. Well, with that, I think we will adjourn. Thank you, guys.